All right, item 5.1, discuss or take action to determine wilderness ad hoc committees and Trinity County's position on Congressman Huffman's bill HR 6596 Northwest California Wilderness Recreation and Working Forest Act. So this is going to be, the, this bill has been submitted with some minor changes from the original bill. Supervisor Finley and I had met with the Congressman and other parts of his group to discuss this. He has requested us a letter of support. I don't know the feelings of the rest of the board on this item and where it came from, or not where it came from, but what they feel about what we should do here. I know there's large impacts in most everybody's district. Supervisor Knight has large impacts, so does only, I do, or actually I have less now, and Supervisor Chadwick has large impacts in her district. So this is meant to be a little more workshop-y than we normally do here. So I asked everybody to do their homework and read the act and come up with changes or thoughts that they had. And what I see the options today is, or in the future on this, is that we send no letter and stay neutral in the fact. We send a letter opposing it outright, and/or we send a letter saying that we think it's the greatest thing since sliced bread, or we send a letter saying we could support, but here are the five or 30 changes we'd like to see before we could give our full support. So with that, are there any questions from the board about what our process is going to be? We'll open up the public first, and then we'll come back and have discussion here.
Are we getting any type of formal presentation with them or staff?
We've had presentat-- no, we are not. We've had presentation. The bill has been submitted.
But to the board today?
No, not today, no. Yes?
I've had requests from various constituents throughout District 5 who would like to see a little bit more input and notice of the meeting. Most of them found out about it on Friday, even though you did announce it two weeks ago that this would be coming up. So they have requested that no decision be made on this board's part, and that another workshop happen, maybe a special meeting, that type of thing.
Okay.
It's a request.
I wouldn't be opposed to us taking input, bringing in new concepts, and then possibly you and I going down county and doing workshops. Is that, or listening to--
If there's money to do it, sure. Sounds like a great plan.
I would like a formal presentation with the board at some point.
I mean, we've had--
That's what I thought we had, John Driscoll.
We've had two.
To the board?
Yes.
Officially?
Well, John Driscoll is official. This is a pretty loosey-goosey group that--
Watch out, one of them's in the audience.
That's okay. That, I mean, there's not like an official team that's going to fly out from Washington and give us--
No, no, I just would like someone from their staff to be able to answer questions if anything come up today.
Okay, I mean, the bill's here. We can look at that. We can discuss that about a workshop.
Thank you for considering that.
And this has also, you know, been publicly vetted in town and through the collaborative. There was a, you know, public shop. So it's, to me, it's our time for us to gather what the public thinks of this, and then as the elected officials, we can represent to Washington what we feel needs to be done. So any other questions?
I would also like to request that we have public workshops. That's been the most consistent thing I have heard. It is a long, I mean, it's, it's pretty long, and I did not find a map, so I think that there are more questions than that, and the opinions of the constituents need to be heard before any final. So I concur, we need to walk workshops.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Okay, with that, we'll open up to the public to take comments on--
So is there any map?
That's actually not the newest one.
Well, it's not, but it was the only one that was on the site.
But it's close enough.
Close enough, thank you. Diana Sheen, we were there.
Diane, before you start, I will point out to the board that's looking at this map, the zones along, northland at Trinity Lake, that is no longer brown, and the little brown zones on the Trinity Lake side that are against the wilderness are no longer. And besides that, the map would be the same.
Dark red, brown?
Yeah, the dark red, brown represents the wilderness, and the one just on the north end, the Bonanza King, has been taken out, and the little buffer ones along which are hard to see from here are taken out. Everything else is exactly the same. Thank you for bringing the map, Miss Sheen.
You're welcome. So I'm here to give you the informal public opinion from, as taken over at the Trinity County Fair. And I also had already presented these to the collaborative on Friday. And anyway, I will, can I give this to Tina? So this is not good for our county, and I would like to say to you not to give a letter of support. And I will confirm to Kay and possibly John. Thank you.
Kay Graves from Lewiston. This is, once again, we have people with their self-interests forcing it on others. And I don't know, I know that I see a few here today that have come in for this, but we have environmental corporations, we have lobbyists, we have special interests, and they put together a little package, and they gave it to a representative who can barely find us on a map, who's taking almost all of it from Trinity County. And I don't want you to give them a "we don't like this" letter. I would like you to give them "we don't like this letter," and you won't be taking any of this from Trinity County, for the same reason you had it removed from around Trinity Center. We don't want it anywhere. We don't need more wilderness areas. We don't need more areas that when they catch on fire, you can't use a chainsaw or a helicopter without getting special permission while it burns. As far as our creeks go, I don't know about you guys, but I drink water. And I like to drink water that I have rights to and riparian rights to without them being taken by the government, because I don't have money to sue the government. I don't have tens of thousands of dollars to fight for what I already own. Our other problem is if you, I mean, all you have to do is look at the California Constitution to see that Jerry Brown, in his second term, already turned our water into literally a franchise. And if you don't believe me, go read the 10th Amendment in the Constitution. Every drop of water we have is regulated. Why do we need to add it to the Wild and Scenic River Act when, if you read that act, it actually states that problems caused by including these in the act will be mitigated after they're included? What the bleep? They should be mitigated before. They should be brought up before. They're going to do it to us, and then they're going to tell us why it's great for us, they're going to ignore us, and they're going to pat us on the head. And this won't be the first time this has happened. Go look at, you know, so-called Clearingle Lake. Look at the history of that. We should learn, you know, we've been messed over by lawyers and such since the federal government took the forest reserve, and we just don't seem to learn our lesson. I'm glad you took out Bonanza King and the buffer area, but for the same reason you did that and more, there shouldn't be any of this. I mean, it reads like a special interests group in Trinity County. Jared Huffman knows nothing about this. When he gave a presentation on it, he couldn't point anything on the map. And as far as the map goes, their new and improved map, it's simply a map, and you press your cursor, and you get a drop box. You move it a millimeter, and you get a drop box. It's useless. You can't find stuff on it. You have to already know it's there. You can't print it. It's as useless as this entire thing, and it's as hidden as this is. And please, just tell them no. Tell them no. Not "we don't like it," tell them no. Thank you.
Come on, more people.
My name is Mike Rourke. I'm currently a rancher in Hefort. New time. House Resolution 6596, offered by Mr. Huffman, entered into the record. I would like to agree with what's been said about the map. I have yet to find one. I know there was a copy published in the paper that you can't find every little segment of the proposed Wild and Scenic Rivers on that because some of them are so small. But I'm opposed to this bill and would urge the board to do it. Everything in their power to see that it fails. And that's not taking no stance, that's taking a stance, an active stance, for the people of Trinity County. This bill is way too big and attempts to be all things to too many groups instead of focusing on a few concerns. And I think that there are some concerns that we have in our county in terms of natural resource management and recreation in particular, and pot farms on national forests. All of these have been concerns around for one time, but there's nothing in this bill that's going to specifically address them or fund that. So we're going to create all this bureaucracy within our federal entities without any, that are already having a hard time managing our forests with the goals that have been set out for them. This is going to complicate things and make things total chaos. I'm especially concerned about the creation of South Fork because of the Trinity/Mad River Special Restoration Area. I'm not sure what kind of acronym that's going to create. 700,000 acres, most of Supervisor Finley's area down there and my area, and the South Fork Wilderness Area included on top of that, which is another 26,400 acres, and then the designation of the South Fork and its tributaries as Wild and Scenic/Recreational Rivers. This will directly affect our family's historic grazing allotment on the South Fork Mountain and other allotments in the proposed management areas. The language in the bill states that these allotments will be grandfathered in, and I had conversations in the language that they were trying to do before him. And grandfathering is not a fail-safe thing, particularly when you set up standards within the act itself that are totally against current operating standards and contrary to current operating standards within the Forest Service regarding grazing allotments and other recreational This will cause the end of our family's sixth-generation cattle enterprise, as our enterprise is dependent on the forage and the cattle's ability to access that forage, which is a bigger issue, that's available through our allotment. And one of those being the goal of continued decommissioning of unneeded and unauthorized roads.
I want to allow more time because we're in a workshop situation.
Absolutely right. These unnecessary or unneeded roads, which aren't defined, who defines what unneeded is? Unauthorized roads. We've been through this process before in that there's a bunch of roads that, if I look at maps back from when I was in high school and before, that had Forest Service numbers on them that magically became unauthorized, and the Forest Service's road management designation, that was their way of eliminating them for management purposes. The Wild and Scenic Rivers Act, Section 6A through 6C, allows for the condemnation of private lands within the proposed reaches of the public access, for public access and the ability to traverse these sections of designated property. I'm not sure that most residents of Trinity County are aware of that. That's a big concern to me, and their ability to condemn properties is only limited by their ability to access funds to do so, so maybe it won't actually happen, because there's no funding in this. 300 miles, I believe, is overreaching. 10 new wilderness areas is overreaching. Focus on what we need. Throw this thing back at them and tell them, if you are concerned about helping us in Trinity County, Mr. Huffman, then come and sit down with us in Trinity County and ask what our major objectives are. Thank you.
Next.
Larry Winter from Heimpong. I have some maps I'd like to share with you for an issue I'm going to discuss in just a second, if I can hand them out.
Yes, hand them to Tina, please.
So what I, I brought up wilderness areas in the past, but this time I'm going to just focus on the South Fork/Mad River forest rework that they have in this bill. And I have some issues here that I hope that the board will be able to answer their constituents before they accept what this bill is on. The first thing I want to bring up is that in the case of the Forest Service, this bill will mandate that they'll prioritize restoration of the restoration area over other non-emergency vegetation management projects on the Six River and the Shasta-Trinity National Forests. And so I'm reading that, that the rest of Trinity County is out of luck, that anything that happens in that area will get top priority over the whole Shasta-Trinity, the west east side also. And so that, to me, is a red flag for you. For me, it's wonderful, because I live in that area, but it's not right. We're now going to start looking at a master stewardship program that I hope we can incorporate the whole county, so that priorities are based on need and safety. Another item, which has been a controversial item in Trinity County for a decade at least, and here it's going to be mandated that for wildland fire practices for the Forest Service, when we have wildland fires, a priority for the secretary shall be used, shall use prescribed burning and wildland fire, to the extent practicable to achieve the purposes of this section. So that means they will now be able to manage wildfires in August to achieve their objectives. And so there's a big push nationally to start doing that, but we need to be, Shasta-Trinity doesn't allow that right now. We need to be very careful on how that plays out. Right now, the way this is written, it would make it a law that they can do that, and we have no idea how that would be practiced. Okay, and then concerning the maps, and also concerning our ability to comment on this in the past, I have a copy of the bill as of June 14th that says that shaded fuel break projects will be a network of shaded fuel breaks in strategic locations within the wildland-urban interface. Something that I commented on when Jeff Cane presented this to me a year and a half ago. How I liked that. The new language, just within, since June 14th and when it's been put before Congress, on page 10, additional requirements, shaded fuel breaks. The secretary shall prioritize the establishment of a network of shaded fuel breaks within the portions of the wildland-urban interface that are within 150 feet of residences, private property, and then also along road sides showing, you know, 150 feet on either side. And that has now made it one of the top priorities. And the reason why I gave you that map, the top map and the second page, the Heimpong, Fire State Council's been working, we're a collaborative group also, we've been working with the Forest Service. We've had this program, we've been on a program and worked for five years, and this is initial planning, so it's still going to be worked on. But we have 14,500 acres. The second page shows what is broken down in unit numbers. The third page is showing First 48 Project in Ruth, and that's a roadside shaded fuel break project. And I want you to see the difference of how much more comprehensive, integrated that the Heimpong project's going to be versus what solely roadside shaded fuel break project, which is this bill is prioritizing, and it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't written this way for the public to comment on. It was just inserted into the bill, and it was showing something different. And I want to, you know, so I guess my main concern is that fire, well, this expresses it well. CWPP isn't mentioned once in this bill, that I've found, and to me, that says a lot. And it's such an important issue for people here in Trinity County.
For the record, could you tell us the acronym?
Community wildfire protection plans. And also, roadside shaded fuel breaks is just a prescription, a tool you use to help the community become fire resilient, and they're prioritizing a tool as opposed to prioritizing what needs to be done, and then you use the tools where it fits and how the different tools can work together. You'll see we have broadcast burns, we have a bunch of different stuff in there. Broadcast burns are for, take advantage of the 2015 fires, where the fuel's been reduced, we can get in there and keep the fuels down if we get there in time, which is critical. And another thing about the roadside shaded fuel break is that it stipulates a 300-foot wide path. When we just approved a roadside shaded fuel break project in Xenia, that's going to go to 600 feet, based on the issues on ground. This is going to stay only 300 feet. And then the last thing, which I really don't get, and I hope you'll be able to figure it out, is that the multi-party monitoring, they'll use a multi-party monitoring, evaluation, and accountability process to assess the positive or negative ecological, social, and economic effects of restoration projects within the restoration area. And that'll be, that group will be in collaboration with the Secretary of Agriculture, Secretary of Interior, and interested persons. Who are these interested persons? And the power that they will have, besides just evaluating, is that they'll be able to incorporate the monitoring results into the management of the restoration area. And so this bill allows for using collaborative groups to help design a project, but it's instigating things from this bill, saying, these are your priorities. And then it also has another multi-party monitoring group that will say, "We don't like what you've done. You need to change it." And to me, that's just taking more of our voice away from local communities.
Do you have the section number of the multi, do you have it in the bill where that's at?
On the multi-party?
Yeah. That's okay, I can find it.
It's I under, under plantations, riparian, oh, compliance.
Okay.
Right after stewardship contract, it's in there, just like towards the end, just before the Redwood National State Park restoration.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
My name is Clarence Rose, and I'm very unfamiliar with standing at this lectern without a three-minute limit, but I'll see if I can handle it. So I urge you to consider this bill dead on arrival. And my basic objection, and I have some other comments to make, but my basic objection is the same one I raised two years ago, when several of us met in a local conference room with representatives of this bill. And I said to them at the time, and it's still absolutely true, that this is as asymmetric of a situation as a bill could set up in terms of the impact on us. So what do I mean by asymmetric? All that we need to do to create more wilderness, new areas and extensions of old ones, is to sign a piece of paper. And by virtue of that having been done, that becomes law, and those lands are withdrawn from the possibility of active forest management, and they're withdrawn from the possibility of more access being created that could help us with our wildfire problem. It's all gone with a stroke of the pen. Meanwhile, the forest management activities that are promised in this bill, we know from experience. It's a very long, tedious process that people invest a lot of time in, and when you get to the end of it, the forest management doesn't happen. So as a modest proposal, I would suggest that if we do anything about this bill, we might say to the proponents, and I wish they would adopt this position, that you get the forest management work accomplished, and then come back and ask us for more wilderness. I don't think that's an unreasonable approach. The way it stands now, the forest management measures, related activities are carrots, which are actually a mirage. They're carrots meant to entice us into buying into this bill so that the wilderness additions can be made without any substance behind the notion that this management is actually going to happen. And I want to talk about the collaborative for a minute, because it has come up as a topic. Mr. Chairman, you referenced that we had a workshop. I, my characterization would be different. We had a, we had a presentation in June from a proponent of the bill, and it was basically a presentation by an advocate. And I remember saying at that workshop, in the spirit of collaboration, where people have come together who oftentimes have radically different viewpoints, would have learned how to work together in the area where our viewpoints overlap, my suggestion was that the collaborative look at this bill, piece by piece, and any place in the bill where we could find consensus, we would indicate that. And any place where we could not find consensus, which is defined in the collaborative as 80 percent support, those areas where we could not find consensus, we would not deal with. So we would hand the bill back, saying, "These are the items that we agree about, that we have consensus, the rest of it, we don't touch." I want to close by, oh, let me mention something about Larry Winter's comment on fire as a management tool. That concept came out a while back, and some astute people said, "Well, this is the government trying to use fire to manage vegetation without doing any NEPA." And it's absolutely true. Where else does the federal land manager have the chance to change the characteristic of a big area of land without any public review, any environmental review? That is it. I also want to comment, well, so we've made a big box in the car fire. And I'm as concerned about that as anybody else, but I have to say this. When you look at the car fire map, the operation maps, you see miles and miles and miles of constructed containment lines that were burnt right through. And finally, the agency said, "We've got to back away far enough and burn out enough that we can control this area." And so we need to think about fire as a management tool, and the lack-- the economy of Trinity County, but are not any more likely to take place as a result of this bill becoming law. Meanwhile, we will be burdened by a huge increase in acres lacking ground access or forest management, both of which are necessary to reduce and mitigate the effects of stand replacing, community-threatening wildfire. Thank you.
My pleasure. I might have already answered this, Clarence. Speaking of the collaborative, I know it was a discussion, everyone's been pretty frustrated with a certain side of the forest versus Six Rivers and Shasta Trinity.
That's true.
And we heard that Friday at the collaborative. Do you, and you might have already touched upon this, but do you get the sense that some of the restoration that is pointed out in this bill would kind of force that side of the Forest Service to actually get some stuff done that we've all been kind of frustrated about? Or do you, or not so much?
You know, I don't see legislation forcing the Forest Service to do anything beyond what they have been doing, and unit by unit. So some forests have taken a pro collaboration, let's get some good work done out there, and other forests have taken a position where it appears to me, I'm biased, of course, but it appears to me that they're trying to preserve their own institution, and that's their highest objective above all others. So I'm personally familiar with a situation where legislation was passed, which was intended to cause the Forest Service to take a certain course of action, and we're four years down the road from that legislation, and we're still not through the process that they are ready to do. So I don't have any more hope for this on a macro scale as I do for that on a small parcel basis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First want to say, we need to recognize that Congressman Huffman, Congressman Huffman, is a really smart guy, and he represents his constituents really well. And the constituents that I think he was focused on when he agreed to develop this proposal was his urban constituents, his environmental constituents, and those people that would be likely to continue voting for him while not costing him anything. And I think this bill is, is very smart on his part, because really, if you think about it, you take this to Congress and you have all the East Coast congressmen saying, oh, more wilderness in California, yeah, screw them, let's, yeah, let's put more wilderness in California, let it burn more around. So there's going to be a lot of support for it. I think this bill, it might not pass under this administration, but in, change the House of Representatives in November, it has a pretty, probably a pretty good chance of passing. And our president probably would sign it because it's going to hurt California, and he loves to hurt California. So I think there's a really, really good chance that this bill's going to pass. So this Board of Supervisors has an opportunity right now to say, okay, if the bill's going to pass, let it pass, but let's exclude everything in Trinity County. Have the bill go forward as it is, but just exclude any of the proposed activities in Trinity County. And I would think that would set the tone to say, our county is concerned, if you want to have a case-by-case analysis of each proposal under this congressional thing, then come to Trinity County, let's sit down, we'll look, we'll map each piece out, say what's the advantages, what's the disadvantages. But in the meantime, his proposal can go forward, and, you know, the East Coast congressional representatives can go ahead and screw California, and Del Norte and Mendocino and Lake County can take the hit, but I don't think Trinity County has to. So that would be my suggestion. When you have more workshops or whatever you might do, I would just say, Congressman, you are a very smart man, and his representative, I've talked to John, John very listened to a lot of our concerns, but it doesn't get to the point that Trinity County is going to be dramatically affected by this. I mean, every time you add more acres that are inaccessible or difficult to get to, you just have more summer months of a fire going that isn't going to be attempted to slow it down or back off or anything. We already have smoke in Trinity County for two months out of the year, we'll have it for five months out of the year, six months out of the year, because once something starts, there's no incentive in a unroded or wilderness area to do anything about it other than let it burn until it gets to a road or a major access point where you can fight it. So I would, I would think this is going to have major impacts on people's ability to breathe in Trinity County and our recreational. Who wants to come to a smoky county to sit on a lake covered in smoke? Ask our, our houseboats how many rentals they lost over the past month with a car fire. So I think there's a lot of disincentive to have this bill for Trinity County. If, if you're supportive of the bill, and I, I think a lot of people in this county might be supportive of the bill, let's say, okay, we support it, but just take Trinity County, anything associated with Trinity County out of it. That'd be my recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm John Driscoll with Congressman Jared Huffman's office. Apologize for getting here a little bit late, multiple traffic stops along the way. I had, I was hoping that I would be able to make a presentation today, I just found out about this item on the agenda yesterday, so wasn't able to put together something that could be comprehensive for your, for your consideration here. And I guess I, that's what I would ask, is if, if the board is going to take a position on this bill, I'd really like to be able to come here and, and give an actual presentation on the genesis of the bill and how it, how it developed, all the public comment that we did take, all the meetings that we had in the northern part of the district on that, and the comments that we took into consideration, the changes that we made, number of which you're familiar with, of course. So, you know, we have tried to be extremely responsive to everybody in this, in these discussions around this bill, and I just would ask that if you're going to take a position on the bill, you allow us to be able to come and, and make a presentation to the, to the board, be able to answer your questions. I am here to answer whatever questions I can today, so if you do have questions for me, I'm happy to try to answer those, and if I can't right away, I'll get back to you for sure. So you can do that now, or we can, you can call me up when you like.
I think, thank you very much for coming, first, because you can see the constituents are very, very concerned, they have a lot of very serious questions, a lot of knowledge. I mean, Mr. Walz just came up here, I've heard a lot of people here, Mr. Rose, a lot of people with very serious concerns, and they're going to bring to us, and I think meeting or discussing this to us is one thing, but I think we need to do an open workshop for the county where you come in and explain this, because we're, you can see, each one of us is going to get bemoaned, and I don't hear a lot of positives, I hear a lot of negatives, and for, for your ability to change people's views or minds or put things at rest or whatever, I think this is, you know, to this little room, yeah, I almost think you need to make this more available for the entire public, because I know they want to do workshops. And I don't know how you do that, but maybe you do an evening thing where people aren't at work, maybe you come up for a couple hours at the Performing Arts Center or somewhere and, and do something there. I don't know, it just seems like this is a really, really big issue. Fires have never been more effective, I mean, affecting of this area. We've had two years here where the entire county is just destroyed by fire. And we've had about eight years of economic damage from, or maybe up to 10 from when the roads shut down at Buckhorn, and so there's just been this nonstop economic problem. And I just think that for, you've sat here a little bit and heard what we're listening to, I think it, it needs your addressing for sure.
Sure, and I, and, you know, I think we can be happy to do that. Again, we did do, we did do public meetings last year on the issue, and talking with people ever since then, meeting with different groups that had concerns over that. So this certainly is not happening in a vacuum, as a matter of fact, it's one of the more public processes that I've, I've seen. And I guess that's, you know, what I'm calling for here, I guess, is, is, you know, the ability to have, you know, one of the congressman's representatives come and actually make a presentation before the board, before actually they take a position on it, is what I would hope. So I'm, I'm all for that. Like I said, I just found out about this agenda item yesterday, so wasn't able to put that together overnight.
John?
I understand Congressman was in Ruth and Hayford reviewing this, or taking this into consideration recently?
We were there looking at the first 48 collaborative fuel break projects, so...
Okay, thank you. Keep in mind that Trinity County is made up of several, just a few communities, and they're not going to drive to Weaverville or even Hayford to sit through a presentation. It's, you know, anywhere from one and a half to two hours to three hours.
Right.
One way. You might want to take that on and work it that way and reach out to constituents.
Sure, thank you, I appreciate that suggestion for sure.
We haven't seen much of you here regarding this, and I guess that's why we haven't been that inclusive. I apologize.
So, John, we will, at some point, ask you back to give, and you've already given presentations to the board in the past, so...
I don't think directed at the board, but yeah.
I'm not sure if you're the one, but yes, we've had presentations, but this is, the bill has changed and evolved, so we will do that. This basically is now, we're in a kind of fact-finding part of this in the community, and that's why we weren't asked to give a presentation at this time, but we will definitely take that into consideration before we do anything else.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I do, can, a couple questions have come up.
How about we let the rest of the public talk, and then we can bring John back up if there was questions that he's noted along the way he wants to answer.
Thank you, Chairman, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jeff Morris, now Weaverville again, for the moment, anyway. You know, I think, I think a lot of the speakers raised some, some great issues, and I think that, not to speak for John, I know the congressman, but I, I think they're definitely, you know, they want to hear those, and they, they want to take those into consideration. A lot of the ideas in this were actually spawned from local folks within the region, some from Trinity County, some from, from other counties, obviously, since it's a multi-county proposal. The other, the other note I would make is that similar to John not being aware of this meeting, I think you're also not seeing some folks here who may not follow the Board's advisors' agenda from week to week. So there's, you know, fishing guides that support many of the measures here, there's local business owners, so I think deferring this to another session that's more well-publicized, I think you'll probably get a larger breadth of input for those meetings, so I would support that for sure. Thank you.
Craig Organ, living in Weaverville, I would encourage you to support this bill. As recently pointed out by many prominent economists during the bears' ears national monument controversy, long-term economic viability lies with outdoor recreation and ecotourism in particular. And getting to live in Trinity County is basically a gift from the rest of the taxpayers in California because our, our budget shortfalls. And letting a few local interests, you know, people that raise beef, I mean, their interests, they don't, you know, long-term economic viability, you don't want to, a rising tide lifts all ships, you know? One or two beef concerns that are family legacies, it doesn't really matter in the broader scheme of things. And that sounds harsh. Also, in terms of fire mitigation, many years now during the fall and during the spring, there have been many controlled burns all around the Whiskey Town area, and it's still burned. And as pointed out by the gentleman, it required a new tactic where they pulled back and built bigger fire lanes, to wit, access isn't really a concern with that new strategy, because if you're going to pull back, you'll be pulling back out of the wilderness where there already is established access, and you can do your burnouts from there, and it will meet the fire that's already in the wilderness. So it's really a moot point. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm Dee Sanders, Trinity River Lumber Company. So I'm here to represent the mill, but also myself. Certainly, this bill has been around, and we've, Congressman Huffman has spent a lot of time trying to have us involved in this with John Driscoll and his staff and the Wilderness Society. We've had meetings for, back over the last year at the mill, dealing with this particular bill. Congressman and John was here recently, and then with me in the office, wasn't one of my finer days. Congressman pretty well got both barrels. But reality, it's asinine. And we watch what's happening across our state right now, and if you really want to go enjoy the wilderness, I suggest you go to the Snow Mountain Wilderness in the Mendocino Fire this fall and take a walk. It'll be really nice, because it burned here recently, in the Mendocino Fire, a big chunk of it did. We're missing the whole point here. There's always ground out, the ground out there that somebody wants to lock up, and certainly as a county having half a million acres of wilderness and wilderness at the current time, you can see how good our management's been of that in the last 30 years. Look at what our trail system is today, or where it was 25 or 30 years ago. Essentially, the management, it was went downhill drastically, just like it has of the national forest. My corp brought up the road systems, and we continue to eliminate these road systems, we continue to lose fire protection, you know? Yes, we had controlled burns in Whiskey Town. Not going to get into that situation with a car fire, but a lot of the people that, yes, they're smart, but they just don't have it figured out on how to protect what God has given us here. If we'd have gotten aggressive with the car fire, it might have been a different outcome, but I'm going to leave that with you. So if you look at this bill and you look at wilderness, we have a lot of wilderness. I challenge you as a board to send a letter of no support. I think you'll find very few pieces in this legislation that are proposed for wilderness that are, you know, nothing other than, sure, there's some great pieces of, of ground out there, they do not come close to being what the Trinity Alps is at all. Some of them are just rock piles and hot and miserable, because people want to lock them up, some of them are great timber stands, and I'm not saying that we don't put them in wilderness so we can manage them, but the reality is, one of the questions the congressman asked me is, well, what's, what's the difference? What do you think's going to happen? Because most of these are roadless areas, a big chunk of them are. I said, well, I don't think anything's going to happen, I think they'll remain roadless. So what's the difference if we put them in wilderness? The difference is we continue to lock ourselves out of any management decisions. So if you look at the management of our national forest in Trinity County, when President Clinton, you know, swept the country with the AL decisions, and we created all the AL set-asides, he curated an AMA and AFORC, an adaptive management area, and gave the Forest Service the authority to try all kinds of new management schemes there, and have they done that? Zero. They have done nothing there since that decision was made, and how many years ago was that, when Clinton was in office? A few. If you're going to do something, board, push the Forest Service into making some decisions and doing some work. Yes, we had issues on the west side of the Shasta Trinity. Basically, it's an accountability issue, and I don't want to get off on that, but, you know, the management that is proposed in this bill is nothing more than they have the capability of doing right now currently. Same way with marijuana. If you want to get serious about things, go out there and do your job. We're not doing it. Forest Service isn't doing it because nobody holds them accountable. I really encourage you to send a letter of no support. Have your hearing due, and have your hearing... Have your hearing due, and have your hearing due, but none of this makes any sense. We're in the middle of a disaster when it comes to forest management and wildfire. Yes, we have terrible conditions right now, and if you get the wrong, these type of conditions, and you get the wrong wind and hot temperatures, anything's going to burn, even well-managed ground. But without doing any management, we're guaranteed it's going to burn. We get the right conditions, we'll burn the whole county up. You know, West Redding's a bomb waiting to go off for twenty years. Nobody would do anything about that. Was it National Forest? No. But we've got the same conditions here, and we continue, year after year after year, making it worse and worse. Whether it comes to Mike Works' cows grazing, we just continue to eliminate the things that helps vegetation management, and we're doing nothing. And in doing that, we could support a lot of jobs in our communities. So just one quick point about this that really bugs me, is they recommend in this bill to put a recreation office in the county here, and I think it's Senator Weaverville, not sure. I challenge the congressman, you already have a National Forest District Rangership, our Rangers Office sitting here that's doing very little. Why in the world are you building another government office to employ more people? And go out to Lake right now and see how many people are recreating here? Just about zero. Cedar Stock told me this morning, they have one house for reserved for liberty. So you need to make some decisions, you need to move forward, you need to be aggressive. Thank you.
Members of the board, my name's Dick Morris. I live here in Weaverville. Few families in Trinity County have worked harder to support wilderness than ours in the establishment of the Trinity Alps Wilderness, which increased the Trinity Alps Primity Area from two-hundred-and-fifty thousand acres to nearly five-hundred-thousand acres. But you are being asked by way of the Huffman bill to expect adding an additional two-hundred-and-sixty thousand acres to the five-hundred-thousand acres of our county already in wilderness. This legislation would commit nearly half of our entire county to wilderness designation. Sitting in your position, I would want every decision that impacts the economy of this county to be carefully and thoughtfully thought through. Since timber is the most valuable asset in our county, second, possibly, only to water, we deserve rock-hard, solid commitments in this bill, not vague assertions, that our forests will once again be productive and contribute to a strong economy, rather than being locked up by the failed management of the last twenty years. If your important support for this bill is to be added, I urge you to support it only after you are certain that there's something in it for us. Thank you.
Haven't seen this kind of line of public speakers not on cannabis, I think, ever in this room. So I think it's really cool to see the community coming together and expressing, obviously, something they're really passionate about here. People from all sides of the county, all walks of life. You know, one of the things that I personally love about Trinity County, and I know that a lot of people love about Trinity County, and why a lot of us are drawn to live here, is kind of building your own destiny, making your own life, living in a place that you can live out how you want to, being in a small community where the community kind of dictates how we all live together. I think that every day that passes, every year that passes, we see more overreach from, you know, Southern California legislation, from the federal government's legislation. It's happening everywhere. It's not just here. I think that it's really important for us to look at, and I've obviously seen this in a tiny spectrum in my life compared to some of these ranchers and people who have been involved in the timber industry and have lived here for generations, but I think that it's really important that we look at very carefully giving away control, giving away options, you know? It's always better to have options, even if they're not all good options, you've got options. I think that we need to look very carefully at giving away those options. I don't know a fraction of the stuff about this bill that probably everybody else in this room knows about, but I know in my short thirty-one years on this planet, that putting my faith in the federal government, or putting my faith in somebody that doesn't live in this valley, or doesn't live in this county, to manage our surroundings, and really, our life, I mean, people are losing lives in fires and whatnot, that's a scary proposition to make. Thanks.
All right. Anybody else?
Morning, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Tom Balacka, Bill McSee. I wanted to like this bill. I generally am in favor of wilderness areas. I love seeing headwaters included in one of the designations that that may grow because there's a wilderness designation. But I think the previous speakers have really brought out a lot of extraordinarily valid concerns. Would highlight particularly the gentleman from Hyatt Palm talking about local approaches to fire protection. We're at a crisis stage with the state of our forests. I think that's been reiterated numerous times. And some of the approaches are going to take some creativity while we get from where we are to where we need to be. Layering more regulation on top of what those creative approaches could entail is probably not the best way to stimulate bringing them about. So as far as the forestry aspects of the bill, I think we've really heard a lot that I agree with, and I do think a letter in opposition or, you know, a very long list of what we'd like to see changed is in order. But one thing I haven't heard so much about is the, is the water aspects, and that is designating a huge swath of, you know, creeks as wild and scenic, river designation, and some extraordinarily short stretches, quarter-mile. Again, in name, it makes sense. Oh, sure, we're going to protect these creeks, but I think Trinity County has a long history of involvement with the federal government in terms of our water management, and I don't think our track record is one that says, hey, we want more of this, because it's going so good for us. You know, even it's these sections, you start, once they get these designations, you start getting into flowery considerations and things that start impacting riparian rights and start impacting the way people live in this county. So I just, I think it's, it's asking too much, particularly of the county. I wish there were smaller changes that I could recommend, but I think it's really kind of a back-to-the-drawing-board type of approach that I think. Anyway, I think that's the tone that you're getting. If we go forward, great. If we want to do more workshops, I think that's appropriate, but I certainly think at this point, the county has got to be in opposition to the bill. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Josh Bose. I live up in Coffee Creek. I originally came here because of my wife to find out about the non-storefront thing that's happening. And then I got, then I started thinking about, how many fires have there been up here since I've been here? And how worse has it gotten since I've been here? And I like to come up with some very serious vegan environmentalist things that we have to deal with, that we're not fully dealing with. I mean, we can pass all the laws locally that we want to, to help with the fire control, but what we really should be doing is thinking about who we vote for in the presidential elections. We have a man there that does not believe in global warming. Now, I can't think of anybody up there who would not now agree that we have a problem far beyond the reaches of just locality. So I just want to ask everybody in here, for God's sake, to think about who you vote for, and more importantly, to vote, to not forget that that's our sacred right. A lot of people have died in battlefields because of that, of our right to vote, to have a say in what goes on federally and statewide. So anybody that you vote for, if they're not, they don't have to be a screaming environmentalist to see what's happening. If they don't question the person that they're voting for about that, about their environmental awareness, then just might as well throw the whole thing down the toilet. Because until we have leaders that really believe we have a serious problem, nothing's going to happen that's going to be substantially satisfying for all of us. You know, we all want to make money. Yeah, I want to grow a lot. I've got my county license, I've got my state license. I can't grow anything if everything burns up. I put over sixty thousand dollars into my home because I knew this was going to happen. I've been, hopefully not, praying that it didn't happen, but it is, it has happened, and it's not going to get any better. So please, whatever happens from this meeting, please, everyone vote in this room, and tell your friends to vote, and tell your friends to think about who they are voting for, and not just be partisan about this anymore. There's no, no room left in our history, our short future, to be partisan. And thank you for being there, and I appreciate every one of you for helping us get at least as far as we have got with the marijuana thing. And thank you for being there, so, and thank you for voting.
All right. Anybody else?
Since this is a workshop-y thing, may I approach and speak real quickly?
You may try to keep it at two minutes.
It'll be, it'll be very short. This, Kay Graves from Lewiston. This pertains to if you have another meeting on this for public input and information. I'm requesting that you have the meeting in the format where the entire board is there, because, not just the ad hoc committee, because the entire board needs as much information as they can get. And I would also like to request that Representative Huffman did not write this bill. This was given to him, and it was given to him by several sources. And I would like the people to be included in that meeting, the environmental corporations, the lobbyists, the people that are actually requested some of this to be placed, like the Weaverville Information Center, those people to come forward and present to the people why they think this is good for us. Also, it clarifies any potential conflicts of interest, and I think that's important for us to know, because obviously, this bill came from somewhere, and we have the right to know who presented this and who's backing it. Thank you.
Since I gave Kay two minutes, I'll give anybody else two minutes. I see some chompers in the bed.
Larry Winter, Hyatt Hall. Just listening to comments, I just wanted to express my dismay when I first heard that they started working on this five years ago. That's about the same time we started on the Collaborate, the Trinity Collaborative, where we had a professor from Humboldt State who specialized in collaborative-based resource management. The whole theory behind that is you get all these opposing views together, and you work out, it was mentioned earlier, you work out what you all can agree on, and then you move forward with that. This is similar, this bill is similar to what the Forest Service has always done in the past, and one of the reasons why we formed a collaborative, because they're, the way they've always operated, they presented a project and then asked for our opinion. And then we, you know, tell them what we think, and then they might put some alternatives up, which this didn't do, and then they decide what they want to do. Well, that's been frustrating for us here, because we wanted to be part of the design of the project. We even had people complaining about, we're still not able to do that all the time with the Forest Service, and yet, some of those same people helped design this project, this bill, that then just presented it to us, and then asked for our opinion. And so when they say that there was a lot of stakeholders involved, a lot of people involved, it came, from what I understand, after the bill was pretty much formulated, and then they asked everybody, what do you guys think? And to me, it was the same mindset as when a Forest Service project comes forward in the past. It's like, you know, but the ability to be able to be a part of designing a project or a foresting bill is so important to becoming a successful bill, and that this method just kind of blew away, didn't take into account. Thank you.
All right. With that, we will close the public hearing, our public portion of this. So I had a bunch of notes, but we took a lot of information that covered that. To the board, I would say there's other things that I found in there. Not only does grazing go away in the rehabilitation zone, but also mining claims are limited to just what's there, and no new mining claims, not in the wilderness, but in the rehabilitation zone. So in a lot of ways, the rehabilitation zone is getting more restrictive and less economic. So something to look at. So, yes, John?
I'm here to make a motion. I just wanted to let you know, heads up here.
Okay. So I, I think it is appropriate for us to have another public meeting in a different part of the county on this. But my question for the board will be, do you want it to be ad hoc, or do you want to be the whole board and have a special meeting? So I'm, I'm fine either way, but.
Well, I would like a whole board, at least, meeting here with, like, as John presented, so we can have a workshop and some of these questions answered in more detail.
I think it's very important for us to gather all the information before we bring in the show one more time.
Sure. I mean, I'm not saying that do a community, I mean, I'm saying in addition to.
Because there's questions in here that I, that I missed, that people bring up, and I think it's important for us to gather more in the collaborative profile where we find out what people want and need, and see if we can bend that to this program, or not bend that to this program, and then just say, start over, or say, but that's part of this that hasn't really been done real well. Bobby, you have a?
Poll.
Poll board.
Okay. All right. With that, what's your motion?
I'd like to make a motion regarding H.R. six-five-nine-six for the Board of Supervisors to take a stance of no support pending additional public input.
Were we going to make John come back and address anything before we make a motion?
Well, we've made a motion, and I apologize for that, so if at last I was made a motion.
What?
Are you willing to have John answer?
Absolutely.
And your questions, and so the whole your motion?
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Remember to kiss that.
John, did you have any more input or answer questions that you want to answer at this time?
Thank you. I appreciate that, and thank you for pausing on your motion there. No, I think what we really, what I'm really hoping for is that you have another, another board session where we'd actually be able to come and make a presentation. And prior to that, whatever questions you may have, if you can, if you can get those to me, I can roll that into a presentation, make sure that we're covering a lot of the issues that we have. It's been informative here to hear people speak on their concerns, their specific concerns. Had a lot of notes taken on that, so I would be prepared to address that at another meeting in the future, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John. All right. So back to your motion.
Absolutely. I'd like to make a motion regarding H.R. six-five-nine-six for the board to take a stance of no support pending additional input.
Do we have a second?
I haven't clarified that. I just, I'm not understanding the motion. I'm sorry, John.
I think we need to second it before we can clarify.
A second for a discussion?
Thank you. What do you need?
So we're not doing anything until?
We're taking a stance of no support pending additional input, which is basically throwing- throws a sword down for those people who want to change our mind to present our side and to help to work toward supporting the bill or continuing with no support, or just going...
Thank you for explaining, thank you.
So...
Did everybody hear that? Thank you.
So my question is to you, I understand that we're not, you're saying not to support it until further information, but what does that mean besides, I mean, do we write a letter to that effect, or we just say that we're not supporting until later?
Correct. I like the last one. Unless you'd like to write a letter, I could throw a letter in there.
I have a subsequent. I would move to take no stand until we have our workshops and are presented to the board again. There's a lot of questions I think can get vetted out and concerned, a lot of good stuff was raised today, and I would like to spend more time vetting those questions out.
What's the motion?
Take a neutral stand until we are back to this discussion again, either vote as a community...
What's the motion?
No, no support, I mean, not no support.
Neutral. So I understand is your motion is to remain neutral until further information and it's affordable. Is that your motion?
Yeah, I think there's some great questions raised, I'd like to go in.
Okay, well, just make your motion, then we can discuss.
I seconded, and I wanted to discuss a little bit.
Okay, so now we have discussion.
Mr. Walsh pointed out something, and I was listening when he, Mr. Walsh said, I was listening when he spoke. Good chance this sucker couldn't get passed. I think that they've been working very well, they took your concerns in when you brought them up before. I think a neutral stance while we go back to workshops, because they're obviously working trying to take concerns, and we should let him have a chance to address concerns on how he deals with it, and get the public involved, and then come back. So that's why I think neutral, just because Mr. Walsh, what he said specifically is, is that we could get over written in a big way here really easily, in the end, because of urban and all that other stuff, but they're working with us to shape this in our benefit as much as possible, we should at least let him have the opportunity to come back with, you know, his ability to help fix some of the, or, you know, address some of the consequences.
Okay.
Just because of what you've said is exactly why we can take a stance of no support, because that throws a sword down, makes them work at working with us if they wish to change it, instead of just having them go, oh, okay, no problem, we'll come in and talk to everybody. I want them to prove themselves and start working for us and with us. I think he heard it from everybody, but that's why I'm going no support, if no support represents a majority of the constituents out there, but it does offer Congressman Huffman the chance to start coming back and making, coming up with public input and working with us.
Well, I think going on, if I may, Chair Supervisor...
Just done, are you done?
I'm done, sir.
I think the supervisor minds has pointed out, they have already shown some willingness to amend adjustments, they did so with some of Supervisor Grove's requests earlier a couple of months ago. So I'm not sure if we're quite there, throwing the sword down, as you say, is quite the approach at the moment. I mean, it's not like they have not tried to work with some of our requests from board members, just saying.
I will say, either one I could go with, but I do tend to lean towards John, that I think it's, that we need to convey that we find serious problems as is today, and that we are willing to work and move forward on those, but there's no way that I could vote for it as is. And so this makes that very clear to the parties involved that we need to do some more work.
Well, why don't we revise my motion to include a letter with some concerns to then keep thinking about, and we will through this process.
Well, the problem with, John's not requesting a letter, it's just that our stance is at this time, we can't support it until we move forward. The problem is, the letter has a time and a place, but that's after we do our vetting. I mean, I've got a list of 16 things here, and I have about a minute five, so, and when I say a list, I mean, it's like, fix the fire problem, so it's not just like little...
Yeah, I know.
So I think we need to vet this more publicly, and the concerns, and then come up with specific things. In fairness to them, we just can't say, fix the water problem, fix the fire problem. We have to say, these are the X amount of things that we move forward on. So a letter comes after we finish that process, it seems to me. So without any other discussion, we have a subsequent. Let's go ahead and do roll polls just for record. The subsequent is to remain neutral until further work is done?
Supervisor Morris?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Aye.
Supervisor Chabot?
No.
Supervisor Peddly?
No.
Supervisor Brooks?
No. Now on to the original one.
Supervisor Chabot?
Aye.
Supervisor Peddly?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
Yeah.
Supervisor Myers?
No.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes. So with that, I would direct staff to, John, do you feel that Hayfork's far enough south, or would you like us to go a little farther south?
Probably Ketten Pond would be a good place to start. Oh, people need to drive the road to get to Ketten Pond. I got all five supervisors to drive that.
Trying to be serious, if you...
I am serious.
Want us to go to Ketten Pond? I'll go to Ketten Pond, I've been there a month, so.
I'm going this afternoon if anybody wants a ride.
You can get to the San Francisco toll bridge. This is something we probably should talk about, figuring out what we want to do with it, and we're going to have to let Congressman Huffman's office know what our plans are, and also where the money's going to come from, and to do this, since all five supervisors are being included. I've settled with Ruth, but...
As a part of the act, I'll come back with some recommendations.
Well, I, that's fine, but we do need to do this sooner than later, because this will be in committee, or is it in committee?
No.
Okay. So, John, I'm going to bring you up one more time and explain the process in Washington for us. And what's...
It's a loaded question.
What's supposed to happen and not, you know, what, just, he is...
Sure. You know, there, even if we had a majority at this point, there's no way we'd get this through this year, there's just not enough time in the legislative calendar to get it through. So the idea would be that we would reintroduce it sometime next year, possibly with changes, if that makes sense. If, if the House turns to the Democrats, it could get a committee hearing, it's not a highest priority probably on anybody's radar, or congressmen's, but it could get a committee hearing there, you'd have testimony on either side, and it, you know, would go through the usual process of markup and all that, and then, of course, there'd have to be a companion bill in the Senate for that as well, so I know that Senator Feigstein and Harris' offices are considering that. Those two bills would have to then be normalized of each other, and then if there's a possibility for passage there, go to the President. I found it a little bit interesting, Mr. Walsh's statement, that the President would sign this bill. I, I am not in any way certain that the President wants to do anything for my boss at all. So I'm not so sure, and I'm worried about it. My guess is that we're actually probably still a few years out before something like this could even, could even get passed.
So we'll take one step at a time. So the spring, what does the spring mean in Washington? Cherry's blend?
Well, these days, you never know. But, I mean, the spring is, you know, everybody starts to submit bills at the time reintroducing it's a new Congress, of course, so, you know, those things get prioritized by whatever party is in, in control in either house. So it's, it's not a fast process, is what it comes down to for something like this.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm looking for a target date to start, you know, a time to get new information.
Sure, I mean, I would...
Or negotiation.
I mean, I say that...
But this would take place during the winter time.
Sure, and I mean, you know, when we made a number of changes just recently, I would just say that it takes a long time to make those changes. We have to actually craft the legislative language, we have to work with legislative council, we have to deal with committee staff, and they offer their input on that kind of thing. So I would just say that, you know, the sooner you can get us, you know, the information, the better, just so that we have time to work on that. But again, it's not, this isn't like anywhere out here, so.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you for your candor, John.
Sure. And then so, yes, well, the ad hoc will take it, and then we'll come back to the board with some ideas, which you guys, where do we, if it's more than one, or what do we want to do? All right? That totally lost my agenda. Thank you very much for coming on this time.